All right, let's go ahead and move on to 8C. Ordinance 2017-77. A bill for an ordinance amending chapters 15.04 and 15.10 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding residential childcare facilities. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 12, 2017. Councilmember Martin?
Yes, Mayor Bagley, thank you. I would just like to observe that this seems like a very broad approach to accommodating a single facility. And maybe we would, it's a type of facility where the city might want to have more control in the process for approving it. That was the source of my questions about conditional use in our study session. So I'd just like to know more about this. I believe that this kind of broad ordinance change is wrong, or zoning change in any case is wrong, but I'd like us to consider not only a variance on the zoning, but also for council to need to hear a presentation by the applicant and have a chance for question and answer. I think that those things are needed, and I'm not sure what the appropriate action is. Maybe give us a couple of weeks, push this down the road a couple of weeks, and give a chance for a presentation to be prepared by the applicant and for staff to prepare an alternative approach. Does that make sense? That's my suggestion.
Councilmember Peck?
My concern about this is, first of all, we don't know where this facility is going to be located. And this is an overall, excuse me, code change. What they are asking for, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but is this code change the same zoning and codes that our marijuana retail shops or medical shops have? Will it be in the same type of zones and areas?
Mayor and Councilmember Peck, I don't have the marijuana retail ordinance in front of me. I know that there's three or four different zoning districts where potentially those could be located. I don't recall specifically what those are, but they're non-residential zoning districts. With this code amendment, we realized that as part of the code update that we talked about earlier, that we needed to look at our group care and childcare definitions and use categories, because as you're aware, the last time we did a major update to the Land Development Code was 17 years ago. And our definitions aren't consistent with state licensing requirements. And so as part of this request, we were trying to accommodate a business that was looking to obtain a state license for a residential childcare facility, which we really don't currently have in our Land Development Code, an adequate definition or use category. So we're trying to find, but as part of this proposal, we were trying to limit the zoning district classification where that use could potentially go until we look at this in a broader scope with a larger code update. To answer or to respond to Councilmembers Martin's question, there are several options we could consider. One, as it's currently drafted in the ordinance, it's shown as a permitted use. As mentioned, potentially, if council feels that they would like to go that direction, we could potentially change that to a conditional use review, which would require a neighborhood meeting, have to go through a public hearing process before the Planning and Zoning Commission. That would be another option for council to consider. I will mention that the applicant is here this evening. If you would like to, if you have any specific questions for the potential company that would like to operate this business in Longmont.
Mayor Protam?
I have a number of questions. Well, you're right, we don't have, we seem to have, we have a definition of a group home, which would be a residential facility, and some sorts of locations for that, which would not be in a residential, I mean, in a light industrial area. I just, I don't want to see us keep having, updating the code and having zoning and then having people come in and expect us to change our code and our zoning just for them, and change all of our code just for one application. We've had, for instance, the problem with the charter school that came into a light industrial area. And we've had several things with charter schools that come in and they take up industrial space that we're kind of short on. And so that's, that's a problem. We have to have a good balance between our industrial space and our housing. And here, we're putting housing into industrial space, and that kind of, you know, it would be better if they would move into, if they would find something in the mixed use, what is it called? In our current thing, it's called business mixed use industrial, right? That would be the place to locate it. Isn't that right? Because it would allow for, it would allow for mixed use, although maybe not a residential group home.
You know, I don't know if the applicant would be interested in coming down and speaking to the council, or if he has any desire to provide information to the council regarding the proposed location of where they're considering this facility, but if the council would like, I could see if he'd be interested in.
Well, maybe. I just don't want us to create more problems. We've already had that problem with, with the charter school and the brewery. And, you know, that was just, we tried to get out of that by not allowing that use. So now it seems like we're getting into potentially more hot water. We have, I guess maybe it's different. My son went to Sunset Academy, which is essentially in a light industrial setting, but it's a daycare, it was a daycare facility and still is. But perhaps because that's only daycare, it didn't create a problem. However, there are, there's a residential facility that Attention Homes runs, and it's in a residential area. And it seems to me that that would be a, I think it's a laudable thing for, to have a treatment facility for young men who have substance abuse problems, but I have the same concern that Councilwoman Peck is. If it's in light industrial where we can have liquor stores and marijuana facilities move in, that's not going to help these young men. And if there's no park where they can go to, or place where they're, where they can walk, if they're just sort of isolated in an industrial zone, I, that doesn't strike me as a very rehabilitative thing. So I think we need to have a lot more information. I also think we should check into, you know, the background of this company to make sure that they, I'm not trying to be suspicious, but, you know, just to make sure that they have a good record and all that.
Just to provide just a little bit more background, you mentioned group care homes. You know, we do have definitions in our code for smaller scale.
Yeah.
Care facilities. We've got family care home, which allows up to eight individuals. Group care allows up to 12 individuals. They can be in residential areas under certain circumstances. But as proposed, what this facility has proposed is a larger scale facility that would not meet the definition of those family care, group care type of living situations.
And I don't think that's a bad idea. I just think that we might be getting ourselves into more, more zoning and more zoning problems than we, that we've been trying desperately to get out of by mixing up residential and light industrial where it isn't specifically planned for that.
So the only, just, I mean, one of the things I learned in my six years of council is counting to four. And, you know, it was hard to do, but would it be possible, or would it, I mean, it might be an inconvenience, but would it be possible if someone were to make a motion to table this to a specific date at some time in the future, to have the applicant prepare a presentation about his background, where it will be located, and what exactly, sorry, say again?
I'm here, I'm prepared now.
Okay, I think, is anyone opposed to allowing the, let's go ahead and hear what he has to say, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ken Huey, I live at 1405 Clover Creek Drive, just moved here a few months ago. I'm glad to be a Longmont citizen.
Sorry to cut you off. And then I was also told by many members of the audience, and also the press, they're having a hard time understanding members of council. So on one hand, don't get two inches, don't get eight inches, get right up there, get right, they can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
No, lift it up.
How's that?
Sounds a little better. We're getting nods, so.
All right, fantastic. Good. So as I said, Dr. Ken Huey from 1405 Clover Creek Drive here in Longmont, just moved here and am ready to open up a facility dedicated to helping teenagers stay away from pot, stay away from booze, stay away from opiates. I come from Missouri to here, where I lived for 10 years and created a residential treatment center there that has grown to be fairly large, a very big positive development for the community seen by everybody in that way, pumps about $10 million into the local economy every year. There are about 120 kids being served every year at that site in Missouri, Lake of the Ozarks, called CALO, C-A-L-O. You can find it online, caloteens.com, if you're interested to see that. It is a good indicator of the general kind of client that we will be taking here. We are not taking court-mandated kids. We're not taking kids that are picked up off the street somewhere. This is parent choice, rather high-end treatment. We looked long and hard at much more residential homes, 1.5 to $5 million mansions, frankly, thinking we've done that in the past in other locales, my company. And the problem is that that tends to freak some folks out when you go by their big, huge home next to their big, nice home. It can work, and it actually turns out generally very, very well, but we thought that it made more sense to go somewhere closer to the heart of the city, particularly in dealing with recovery, where you can plug them into the community. And you want them near the alcohol store, and you want them, you know, a mile away from some pot shop, actually, because you've got to deal with that. They don't get to come into the facility, get clean, and never deal with that stuff again. And if they can do it in a safe environment, that's fantastic. So you want it in an open spot where there are controls, and we take away, you know, phones and, gosh, pornography and music that's perhaps not so hot. Get rid of a lot of the distractions, help them work on the issues that they need to work on, and in that safe, closed, but not lockdown environment, let them interact with the community in ways that are positive, and help them get strength in their legs so that recovery can last for the rest of their lifetime. That's the kind of work that we're trying to do. We don't need to have, you know, 50,000 square feet on site. We don't have to have a park right next door. We actually have vans that we take the kids to lots and lots and lots of activities throughout the week. So we'll go skiing, the plan is to be three days a week at Eldora, and everybody will have a ski pass, and to go five days a week to a local gym and start out the day working out, to go up into the mountains and mountain bike, to hike, to really find replacement activities, as well as do the clinical work you need to, to get these kids clean. Again, these are middle-income to upper-income families that are looking for the services that we provide, and so you just don't have kids that are scary for you or things like that. One of the wonderful things about Colorado is you must be desiring of treatment, or you don't have to stay. So there's no lockdown. If you don't want to be in the facility, you don't come. If you come and say, "I'm out of here," you get one chance saying, "I'm gone," and then we'll take you back if you change your mind, and then that's it. You don't get to come back. So it is those wanting to get clean. And we want to be in an area where we can access things quickly in terms of services, and take them on shopping trips, and teach them how to cook, and go get the food that we need to, and go out and mountain bike, and do those things that I'm talking about. And also, that allows for a really nice building, which we've, we've found, that isn't parked in the middle of somebody's neighborhood. That actually is more problematic. What questions might you have for me?
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Dr. Huey, what is the brand? I understand there's, there's a brand name. You mentioned CALO, but you're opening this facility under a different brand. Can you remind me what that is?
Yeah, I sold CALO a couple of years ago. Kokoa Academy or Kokoa Recovery, both of those names we own. And that is partially owned by a larger organization called Family Help and Wellness. Don't want to get too confusing, but they're the financial backers who provide back office support of accounting and HR, things like that, and put up most of the money, not all of it. And then they own a big piece of the company, I own the rest. And the company is called Kokoa Academy. So that's who's local.
Okay, so then you are the founder-owner of all the Kokoa Academies across the country?
That is correct.
Okay, so you are here for some amount of time to found this facility, but then you may be moving on to another?
No way. This is my home, I'm not going anywhere again. This is where we wanted to be. So that's why it's being built here. This is the home for Kokoa Academy. We have a second site being built right now in Utah, a place called Midway, Kokoa Academy for Girls. So we do need to have the boys and the girls separate, and we don't want a maternity program, we're looking for a recovery program. So the girls are there, being taken care of.
Okay, are you a for-profit or a nonprofit?
It's for-profit, with a nonprofit arm.
What's the nonprofit?
So you have a 501(c)(3) arm that allows you to do fundraising, mostly because we do fundraising to help others. So next week, I'll be in Guatemala, setting up the interface between Kokoa Academy and an orphanage down there. One of the things that these kids struggle with is they're pretty self-focused, they really don't have a sense of their place in the larger universe, and what it means to be a healthy, contributing member of society. And the way that you get there, one of the ways, is you have them serve in some profound ways. We take them down to Guatemala, and they'll go down every couple of months, and you're in an orphanage with kids that have been abandoned at the age of seven and left on a street, and they have truly nothing, and they get to help provide something, teach them skills of sewing, or something that can provide a living for them. You give them that chance to offer meaningful service, it is transformative. So that's part of what we do also.
Okay, and as, as part of the curriculum, I mean, you mentioned skiing, mountain biking and stuff, do you also provide, these are high school-age students, do you also provide high school?
Yes, we'll have a full academic program, an academic director, who we've identified and expect to hire in about a month, actually, quite early to prepare. We'll have, by the time, hopefully by the time we're open, but quite quickly, we'll have an accredited high school that's part of, embedded inside the program. It's not core to what we do, but we need to be able to do credit recovery and things like that. These kids, you can imagine, come from situations where their grades stink. So we help them fix that. That's part of what we do.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
We haven't heard from you yet, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Dr. Huey, my question, I have a couple of questions. The first question is, you mentioned that you don't need 50,000-square-foot facility, but what's your minimum requirement, would you say?
Minimum to have 32 kids is about 9,000 square feet. Pretty hard to do it below that. What we're looking at is about 11,500 square feet. It's perfect for what we're looking for. Mostly, we need offices for therapy, offices for nursing. We'll have a full-time nursing staff, a medical director, and we need a nice industrial, commercial kitchen. Looks really pretty. The idea is that you drive up to it, and it looks very homey. It's not going to look like some industrial, you know, outdoorsy, that's the wrong term, some just commercial, you know, non-home-like environment. It's supposed to feel very warm and inviting, and yet be in a place where we can house that many kids and have parking and everything for all of our staff.
Okay, so 32 kids is the maximum you would have staying at any one time?
We'll have, our plan is to license for 40 so that we could flex if we need to, knowing that we've got discharges the next month, but 32 would be our average daily census.
And what would you say your number of total employees would be for the site?
By the time we're at full pond, we should have about 75 to 80 employees.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I like your program, and it sounds like it is something that we could really use here. My concern is for the city. We haven't done this before, and if we rezone this to go into light industrial, it will be a universal thing for the city, not just for your school or your program. So this is going to be on the planning and zoning agenda tomorrow night. So I would like planning and zoning, whoever happens to get on that board, to look at the overall impact that's going to have on our zoning for marijuana stores, et cetera. I know you don't care if they're near marijuana stores, but I kind of do. So let's look at that. I know that we have setbacks from schools, but I'm not sure this would fall under an accredited school in the St. Brain Valley School District. And I don't even know what permits that we have that through planning and zoning for our marijuana stores now. Since we don't know where you're going to be located, we don't really know if somebody has applied for a permit near you. So I think that we really need to look at that, at planning and zoning, if we're going to do this, as an overall code and zoning adjustment for the city.
If I could address one of the items you had, Councilwoman Peck. The, there were two things you said. Well, the big one was that, where is it? I don't mind telling you that the issue is we don't have the lease done, but we can't get the lease done until we're done with zoning. So, so I don't mind telling you, there's nothing stopping me from doing that. Behind J.C. Penney, the former Bright Horizons building, is where this would be. So, and there was something else that you said right before that. Oh, I don't want them across the street from a pot shop. Don't, you know, please understand. But, but I also don't want them never having the chance to kind of battle some of that. I mean, I've been doing this for a lot of years, and we know what to do to help kids get better, so.
I guess the, just, I just want to chime in real quick, that I work with a lot of juveniles in what I do with substance abuse issues that are in the court system. And we have a real need, whether you're for-profit or nonprofit, I've always thought that Longmont and the county in general lacks a facility like this. We don't have a place short of a court-mandated, "Hey, you've screwed up, you're now in a dependency and neglect proceeding, you're facing juvenile charges, you're facing," I mean, it would be nice to have a place to have parents turn to where they could get treatment, therapy, and support. And, and my thoughts is, I mean, I share a lot of your concerns, Councilmember Peck, about what could be around there. But at the same time, you know, I'd kind of, I don't know anything about how you do it or what you do. And I don't mean that by, I want to know. What I mean is, I'm not the expert.
Yeah.
All I know is that if someone were to come in, whether they're paid well or not, love, take care of, and teach and mentor these children, I think that that would be a phenomenal, a phenomenal benefit to our community, regardless of where we place it. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, I'm encouraged by you wanting to build this here. I think it is a great need. I think that...
Again, a reminder, all council members, pull it a little closer.
Okay.
Pull the whole thing, pull the whole thing closer. Get in about four inches.
I do think that we could, what we could do is make this a conditional use in this zoning area. That way, we would have to look at what is surrounding it in order to approve it, perhaps. I just think, I'd like to see us move on and have you get your lease and get, move forward. Can, can we make that amendment to this ordinance to make that a conditional use in that, in that zone?
Or maybe could we pass it tonight, and then get that done between now and second reading?
So one of, so what I was going to say is, you have some options available to you. One of the options I was going to throw out is what Councilmember Martin and Councilmember Finley brought up, which was a conditional use. This does require a second reading, so it'll be brought back to you. Yeah, so we can just change that for the second reading, if that's what council wants.
Do we need to amend it now, or just pass it like it is, and it'll come back as conditional?
I think you can pass it as is with the direction to add conditional use instead of making it allowed by right.
Okay, then I...
And then we would, we would make the change, we would make the change between now and the next meeting, and it would come back as a conditional use.
And be, am I understanding right, and be approved then at that time?
Yes.
Well, it would be approved as a conditional use, and then it would have to go through the process of the notice public hearing, and go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their approval.
But zoning would be changed, you'd get what you'd want from this process.
Yeah, time is of the essence. We've, we've been working on this for about six months, and so Bright Horizons owns the lease right now, and it's vacant, you may or may not know. And so the opportunity to sort of get into it and get the build-out done, that window is shrinking. And so we've, we've gone, you know, we've listened to recommendation, you know, Ryan's been fantastic, and wanted to do it exactly how we've been asked, and we're here doing that, but if we add two or three more months onto it, that's beyond hardship, that's a real problem.
Okay. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bagley.
If you could pull your mic a little closer, I know that the paper's frustrated.
Yeah. How's that? Good, John, back there? I agree with Councilmember Finley and others, there's, there's a strong need for a facility like this in Longmont. It addresses a strong societal need, so I would be the last person to want to not happen. And I will tell you, I got a few N-I-M-B-Y calls this afternoon. So, you know, standing and saying that this is a need and we should have it here is, is not the easiest thing in the world, but I think we do have to recognize that it is something that is going to have a potential impact on Longmont that needs to be carefully assessed. So I would be willing, I think, to pass this on first reading with the instruction to staff to change it to a conditional use process, but I think we really need to go through the conditional use process. I do.
Well, with that, do we have a motion? Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I move that we pass, what number was this?
Ordinance?
8C with a, with a condition that it's brought back as a conditional use process.
Do we have a second?
If I can...
Councilmember Martin and Finley, it was a tie.
If I can add something, in talking to the planning staff, if council brings it forward as a conditional use, and you pass it on the second reading, they think they can get it on the Planning Commission agenda in January, and still go through the review process that I'm hearing council.
Will that work for you, Dr. Huey?
We'll do whatever we have to, we want to be good neighbors. It is interesting, I'm nine-tenths of a mile away from it, so I would be a nimby, but cracks me up. In my mailbox today, I got this anonymous flyer that just slandered my field. It was really discouraging, but whatever, sometimes people are ignorant and don't know what's going on. Okay, we'll educate.
Anyway, so, if there's a NIMBY problem, I'd be a stakeholder, so.
All right. Is there additional argument against the motion? Councilmember Martin?
I'm not arguing against the motion, but I do want to say that I had that flyer read to me over the phone this afternoon, and I think maybe a little public education about this program and what's good about it would go a long way to making that public hearing go more smoothly.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote, if there's no further comments or debate. And that passes unanimously.